We have a problem.
Welcome.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Why not? Ah, well, welcome.
I see.
This is the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, Wednesday, February 20th, 2013. And may I have role call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorien.
Here.
Landrigan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Sheets.
Here.
Yes, sign.
Now, we have a report regarding the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, February 13th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Let's do the pledge of allegiance to Mr. Astorien.
Certainly. You're happy to. Because the flag is in the right place, right? Please follow me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is the election of a chairperson.
Madam Chair, if I may make a suggestion for us to postpone this until this body has all the commissioners present for electing the new chairperson.
I second that.
We have a motion to postpone this until we have all commissioners present. And it's a vote. Do we need to vote on it?
Planning Commissioners Astorien.
Yes.
Lee.
Yeah.
Sheets.
Yes.
Chairperson Landrigan.
Yes. Thank you. So we will have this on the agenda for our next meeting. Thank you. We have approval of minutes from December 5th, 2013.
2012.
12, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
Any seconds?
Second.
Any changes, comments on the minutes? All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
All right. So three, two, with one abstain, the minutes are approved. We have oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The commission can question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. I have no cards, and I see no one coming forward, so we will pass the second election of the chairperson. We'll go straight to the zoning appeal. We have new business. We have variance case, PVAR 1219971. And Brad, would you like to introduce that? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission. As mentioned, this is variance case PVAR 1219971, located at 1675 Art Even Avenue. This application, the applicant's proposing to add a 172-square-foot bathroom and walk-in closet above a portion of the existing first floor of a 3,539-square-foot, two-story residence, which includes the basement. The total floor area after the addition, and including a 736-square-foot area that's counted toward floor area as part of the detached garage, total floor area would be 4,447 square feet. The maximum allowable floor area for this lot is 2,823 square feet. The applicant is requesting a standards variance to allow the second-floor addition onto the existing house, which further exceeds the allowable floor area. The property already exceeds the allowable floor area by 1,452 square feet. As proposed, the standard variance would allow the property to exceed the allowable floor area by 1,624 square feet. The existing single-family house and garage was built February 5th, 1924. There were no records found for any additions for this property after this date. While the permits from 1924 are not very clear, it appears that the second floor above the garage was original. In addition, staff has found that large basements on flat lots are usually original as well. As relates to an environmental review, the subject property is listed on the Glendale Register and is a contributor to the Art Even Highlands Historic District. Due to the small scale of the project, it is exempted from environmental review. The applicant is requesting that the planning commission reverse the planning hearing officer's denial of the subject variance. Planning hearing officer was not able to make all four required findings in favor of the application because the existing floor area already exceeded what is allowed in the R1 floor area ratio, District One Historic District Zone, and the proposed bathroom could be accommodated within the existing 1,115 square feet on the second floor without adding additional floor area and further intensifying the nonconforming floor area or altering the exterior of the house. He felt that there was no hardship or unusual circumstances which caused the floor area to be further above that allowed by code. It should be recognized that the floor area regulations generally have two purposes: to control the intensity of development in terms of traffic generation and to control bulk and mass. The first of these purposes, controlling intensity, is more useful in commercial zones and typically does not apply in residential zones, especially single-family residential zones. The second purpose, the control of bulk and mass, is important in residential zones. In this case, it's important to note that this property is developed with an unusually large amount of floor area on the basement level, 607 square feet. If this 607 square feet at the basement level were discounted, the floor area ratio for the property would be lessened from the proposed .47 to .40, still above the .3 limit set by code. The addition itself of 172 square feet adds about .002 to the floor area ratio. Staff has received some phone calls prior to the hearing officer meeting regarding the variance request. Caller stated that they received notice in the mail and saw the sign on the front lawn. There were concerns about making the house too massive and too much floor area. It is recommended that the planning commission sustain the zoning hearing officer's decision denying this project as proposed. If the commission is inclined to reverse the zoning hearing officer's decision and approve the application, staff suggests continuing the hearing to March 6th, and staff will return to the commission with draft findings and conditions for approval. The plans and maps are located directly behind you, and the applicant and property owner are in the audience available, and staff is available for any questions.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Of staff, please?
Yeah, you know, in your report, you indicated that there's an alternate way of situating this restroom within the existing floor plan. Where are you suggesting to put this without really, you know, destroying any of the living spaces? Because I see the three bedrooms. I see the proposal here. You've got bedroom, office study, another bedroom, and bedroom. You've got one bath on the second floor. So where are you saying that they could put the restroom without the addition?
Looking at the second floor here, it's possible that they could put a bathroom in this bedroom here.
So you have to destroy your bedroom.
And then move that bedroom over to where the office is now.
I see.
That's an option.
Okay.
There may be other options as well, but that's one that jumped out. No change to the floor area at that point, virtually no change in the exterior.
Okay. So they do have to give up the existing space for whatever use it is, you know, to accommodate the bathroom?
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Foye?
Just let the commission know that our historic preservation plan, or J. Platte's here as well.
Thank you. If there are no more questions for Brad, does Mr. Platte want to say anything? No, all right, just here for...
I have a question.
All right. Mr. Astorien? Have any questions?
Not now.
None of the staff? Okay.
I do have one more. Just verification purposes. You did mention that there was no record of any room additions or any building additions, and your inspection of the property, it seems like that it was all original structure. So this will be the very first request for this addition, then?
That is correct.
Okay.
You've got me warmed up now. So I had sent an email to Mr. Foye ahead of time and asked him the same questions that you just had, at least the same genre of questions. And the answer that I got is that the basement and the space above the nanny space, because I watched the hearing officers, Mr. Hamilton's proceedings on this, the nanny space was done in 1924, at least that's so far as the records show.
That's correct.
Okay. And the three calls that you've had from the neighbors, their main concern has been quote-unquote "massing."
That was one of the concerns, as well as...
What was the other?
The other one that was brought up was that it was exceeding the allowable floor area, which is the subject of the variance.
Which really translates into massing, right? Or no?
Or precedent setting.
Well, no, that was not the concern. Precedent setting was not the concern. It was the mass. They just were afraid that this thing is going to be a behemoth, basically.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no more questions of staff at this time, I would like, I have the applicant, I have the owner, Chris DeWitt. Would you like to come, give us your name and address? And you have a 15-minute in combination with your architect.
If I take that long, I feel sorry for you. I'm Chris DeWitt, Christopher. So I think just to one of the things you're saying, because I've had a lot of people walk by and been very upset with me when they read the sign, and because I think they have the impression that we're tearing the house down. And we've, Brad and I talked, we're kind of confused by it because of the wording, but a lot of people have thought that, you know, it's a really sort of beautiful neighborhood, and their concern was that we were tearing the house down. Originally putting a parking garage was the original one, talked about parking. Remember, we talked about that when we came by. We had one person who wrote today an objection. I called him. He took it back, called within an hour, because I think that there's a perception that we're going to add stories, make it bigger. And when I send photos and show people that it's tucked in the corner, I haven't had any complaints. Everyone's been okay with it. We've actually had both the neighbors that are contiguous write letters in addition to three others. So, I mean, a couple of things for us. We obviously would love to have it inside the house. It's obviously cheaper and easier. This has been a very long and expensive process already. The bedrooms, I took photos, the three there on one end and the one at the other, there's steps going down. So the idea of turning the one that's in the back into either a bedroom for our children or a bathroom is very concerning. It's at the top of a steep wood stairs, and I have photos that I can show. And there's, it's kind of like, it's the stairway up, and it has a small landing, and it splits up to that other bedroom, up to the main hallway.
Now, if you give us those photos, you get to keep them.
Well, you can keep them.
Well, I'm just saying that when you do that, they become part of the public...
That's perfectly fine. I don't...
We're happy.
And I'm reusing them, hopefully. Oh, yes, so I'll give you that. This is the stairway from the bottom. So right here is where they're talking about putting another room or a door. This kind of shows the two ways, coming from the stairway up to the main hall, and you can kind of see, this is the landing, and it's an up, two steps up on both sides. So the bathroom would be, Brad was talking about putting it right here, so you'd be at the top of a small landing. If they use it as a bedroom, the kids are here, so our children are four and, or five and six at this point, so they'd be walking down top of the stairs and then coming up to our bedroom. And for us as a family, that's just not an, personally for us, not an option. I don't think it makes for a functional addition either. So obviously, we wanted to add it, we couldn't do it inside the house for that reason. One of the things that came up when Brad came to the house was that, you know, the house has two bathrooms. Why do we really need another one? And I think that with this house and how things have changed, when it was built, obviously three bedrooms to one bath was a perfectly good ratio. And to be honest, we don't need it. I mean, obviously, a lot of people live with less. It's a lovely house, and we just filled it with two children and my partner and I, that it would be, make the house usable for modern standards to have two bedrooms for a three-bedroom slash four-bedroom area. We also have owned historic homes. We had a house on the National Registry in Philadelphia, as well as an 1847 house. And I think that one of the things that bothers us, being an owner of several historic homes, is when they are, the internal flow of them has been destroyed. And I think that if you walk in, you know a house where things are added in weird places, weird bathrooms are added, weird closets are added, and it's just, it makes the house lose its character. For us, I think the house needs to stay true to what it was. We're very happy that it did get passed by Jay with the historic board, and we wouldn't have done it otherwise. We want to make sure that, you know, I'm 46 years old, the house is older than me, and it's going to live much longer than me. And so we realize that it will have a life beyond us. I feel that this approach, you know, is the best. We've got an architect who knows Glendale, who's worked with the Sorek Houses. As I mentioned, we had Jay review it. It's tucked into a corner that won't add to the height of the house. It doesn't add the floor plan. The neighbor actually behind us is like, it's going to look better this way, which I agree right now. Again, I have photos of the landing. It's a, it's a tarred roof with an air conditioning unit on top.
I'm sorry, Chris, can you move?
Sure.
Make sure that the audience can hear.
Sure. Okay. It's a tarred roof with an air conditioner on top. This is the view from where it would be, so there's no, it doesn't, no one can actually look at the addition. There's no windows. It's blocked by trees. And this is where, there's actually already a door out to the landing right now. I don't know why they have a door there, but there's actually already a door in our hall that goes out to it. So I wanted to bring those for you. I don't think that, I mean, obviously, I'm not a rural expert, but I guess for me, anytime zoning laws are retroactively applied to a property, it's hard to make sense. I think one of the things Jay, or Alan's probably going to want to talk about, is that a lot of the houses in this neighborhood are as over by as much or more the fire requirement than our house currently is, and then it will be with this addition. It's not changing, as Brad mentioned, the lot setback, the height, the massing, and it's only changing the fire number by a percentage. So, and also, like I said, I think that the neighbors who I've talked to, we haven't had any that have lodged formal complaints. There've been a few that have called, but again, anyone that I've spoken to, and there's none on record that have complained about it. Anyone who has, it's just been in the support of the project. The last thing that's come up is that the house is quite large. When Brad was there, he mentioned that it was, you know, an awfully large house already for a family of four. And I think it's just that the assessor's number is only 2,900 square feet. The basement and the stuff, the space for the garage are nice, but they don't really add day-in, day-out living area for us. And that's about 1,300 of it. So it's a really, if you look at the first floor and second floor of the house, it's a 2,900-square-foot house. The basement and the garage, you know, really are what make it seem quite so large. So that's all I wanted to say, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the applicant? Why don't we have your architect talk before we ask any questions of yours?
You'll probably be able to say more things that you want to hear.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I have a card here for Alan Malekian.
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Malekian. My address is 2255 Honolulu. I want to talk about, a little bit about the technical part of this, and just kind of explain to you what we saw and what we did. When I walked in, the top right corner is what you saw, and it was just an automatic location for us to be able to do this addition. We did do a very cursory review of the interior plans, and it was very quick for us to understand that by, minus the elimination of the bedrooms, it was not an option for us. What we did was, we started working with Jay and Jay Platte, and several different variations of that. And what we came up with was the most sensible and most appealing to the existing structure. What we have right now is that you're looking at several different things. One is that the existing assessor number and what we have, then we're basically legalizing the square footages that was originally built with the building, that was never added on to the assessor number. The addition that is being done right now does not add to the lot coverage, nor does not take a single square foot of the landscape area. So the open area stays the same. Lot coverage stays the same. What I've also done is that I've done a Google map of the bottom. If I can come up and I can kind of walk you through there. So long as I get it back. So what I've done here is that I kind of made a blue marking of what, where the addition is actually going. And this is the, pretty much the 500-foot radius that we have. What I've done here is that I've kind of gone through every single property, and I've kind of pulled out. And the problem right now we're having is that two things. One is, do we compare this house with the square footages that was not ever added on to the assessor, and then compare it to the house's square footages that are only available, that information that I have is the assessor? Do I do that? Or do I just take the assessor information that I have, which is the 2,932, and then compare it to the houses that we have? So then I'm comparing apples to apples, because I have no idea if the other homes do have the similar situation or not. So I've kind of gone both ways. Looking at this as a 2,900-square-foot building, as what the assessor shows, forget about the basement, that it's not visible, nor the square footage above the garage that was already there, that was not added, is part of the roof, the pitch roof of the Tudor houses within that space there. And if you start looking at this, immediately, two houses over, you have a house that it sits at a 67.5% FAR. That is almost twice as much as what it is now.
Based on the assessor's number?
Based on the assessor's number, right now. Now, I have no idea if they have a basement, it could be more or not. But what I'm trying to prove to you, that the square footage that we have, even if we add these new square footages, it's not setting a precedent in the neighborhood. Going down along the same street, down here...
Relative to that last percentage?
I'm sorry?
The last point you made?
This one?
When was that square footage built?
I just looked that up on the assessor, LA County Assessor. I don't even know when it was done. Could have been done recently. Seven houses up, you have a property that is 40% FAR. You have a 34.6 FAR. You have 36 points. So all of these are homes within the 500 square foot that are over the legal limitation of the 30% FAR. The other, immediately to the right of that, you have a house that is 4,200 square feet. The lot is larger, so the FAR is lower, but the 4,200 square feet. So if you look at the 4,200 versus the 2,900, compare apples to apples, it is larger. The other thing I want, I want to make sure that we all look at the same massing. The massing right now, if you look at the property, you see all these greenery here on here. But some of these homes that are essentially one-story, two-story, the lot coverage is essentially almost 50%, if not more. So the massing of this, the addition of this massing, does not really add any additional, which the intent of this FAR is, the intent is. So that the massing, or the volume, or the characteristics of the home does not really yet compete with this new addition. So now, these are some other renderings. This is a perspective. This is actually a house. This is what you would see. I think the trees are now trimmed a little bit more, but this is what you would actually see from the street view. This is the only corner, this is the southwest corner of the property. If you stand right in the corner, which is right about, right here, and you look across, you will see just about that little end of that building. And this is, I've kind of hatched it in, so this is what the top portion is, and that's where it is. And this is what it will look like from back. This is what it is now, and this is what we're going to do.
Mr. Malekian, you said this is what is there now?
No, 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 it's the other way around. That's what's there. This is what we're proposing, and the other is what is there now.
All right, thank you.
Yes. What we tried to do in the variance case, we tried to explain all of this information, and I guess at some point, it was missed, or it was not really taken the way that we, the emphasis that the planning, the planner was suggesting to take away from the bedroom to be able to add the bathroom and the closet, essentially, functionally does not work for the family. It is, the room that we're adding, it's not a room, it's not a, technically, a bedroom that an additional person will be occupying, that it's not really technically adding any kind of a traffic flow or any other additional house members. It's just a functional, additional function that is coming in there. The last thing is that we did, we did contact the homeowners association, and they wanted to, they did not officially support nor deny the project. And it's just more of a political reason. They just said that we're not going to come and oppose the project, nor we're going to come and support it. So I completely understand where they stand, and so I appreciate them being frank with us on this. But other than that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, unless I miss something.
Which homeowners association?
Northwest.
Is it still northwest?
Mr. Malekian, that would be the Northwest homeowners?
Northwest homeowners.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm.
I do have a question for the gentleman.
Yes, please.
In your planning hearing procedures, the proceedings that you have, there was emphasis on structural elements, why you've chosen it, where it's supposed to be, as opposed to anything else that would you...
When we were actually submitting for the variance case, Brad and I and Chris, we all met at the house, and we walked through the upstairs. And the suggestion that came through to be able to place the bathroom in the office or the den area, and be able to close that off and have a door open up and so on. So I literally, between that time and the hearing day, I brought a structural engineer over. Being that it is in the middle of the floor area and adding plumbing and so forth, and I can, if I can walk back, I can kind of explain to you. It is, it is a very steep pitch roof that is in there. The walls are set in from the edges of the roof, so down below, it's further out. So in order for us to do plumbing or any kind of a structural modification there, it will impact some, in some sort of way, the exterior walls, and then also, you know, he assumed that, being that that wall that we have right at the edge of the den, being that that's the edge of the roof pitch that is coming, that is most probably is going to be considered as a sheer wall. In order for us to open that up, other structural implications may occur in the building that there is a possibility of affecting exterior. What we are proposing is essentially, we are transferring all the load on the exterior walls down to the footing. There's going to be absolutely no structural implications to the rest of the house. The impact is going to be essentially away from the public view, and also, it's going to be monolithic from the footings all the way up, so we're going to have one continuous wall there. So structurally, there are going to be impacts if we do anything within the floor. We have to cut the floor. We have to put in tiles. We have to do some plumbing, plumbing, some of the, excuse me, some of the elements, yeah, please, some of the elements that are going to be needed for the... going to be needed for the.
We try and keep our guests on the edge and thirsty so we can get the full story out.
It's a torture, Kimberly. But yes, we did look at all the options there as far as interiors. So to minimize the impact or eliminate the possibility of impact of the exterior walls that are being mostly visible from the street, and being that it is a historic building, we just didn't want to even approach that.
Madam Chair. In the findings, I tried to look for some of the things that might address the second findings. Do you have, can you address that issue?
Which is the evidence of demonstration?
Which is the exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved or to the intended use or development of the property that do not apply generally to the other property in the same zone or neighborhood?
Well, the reason Commissioner Lee is asking you that is that for us to overrule the determination from the zoning official, we have to make four findings and he could not make those findings. And you, it's incumbent on you as the appellant to let us know how you could make those findings if he couldn't. So that is how we have to be able to respond. So if you could formulate that for us.
Well, the exceptional circumstance, obviously, it's a historic building. It does have its own special characteristics that does not allow us to go beyond the certain elements there. In a normal situation, it's not a problem. What I'll do is I'll tear the walls out, I'll add another wall, I'll change the windows, I'll change all the interior, impact the exterior, come up with the whole new plan and then, you know, then there we go. We have the bathroom, we have the addition, we can do whatever we want to do. In this case, we have a very special circumstance, being that it is a historic. We are limited of what we can and cannot do with the project. And that itself, for us, is an exceptional circumstance. What we've done is we've tried to minimize the impact to the historic characteristics of the house. We've, both interior and exterior. As Chris mentioned, interior has a very clean flow, has a very large, wide staircase and a landing area. In order for us to be able to take any of these walls out and then be able to, it will impact the windows on the exterior, so therefore it will impact the view from the exterior side. So these are, to us, these are special circumstances. Obviously, you know, if this wasn't a historic, you know, we can just add.
Go ahead, finish it.
Thank you.
Just, you know, when a staff proposed you to convert one of the bedrooms into the bathroom, obviously requires all the plumbing and everything to go to that, you know, bedroom. How would that affect the historical value or even the interior, maybe exterior, bringing those plumbing to convert one of those bathrooms?
The problem, okay, so we have several issues there. To bring up plumbing in a, through a wall that is existing, not adding a new wall down on the ground, assuming that certain walls and certain rooms that are located aligned with the certain walls down below so you can actually run the plumbing up through the wall. Then what will happen is all the interior finish works, all the handcrafted details and elements that are there, that potentially is part of this, those all have to be removed. All the walls have to be cut out, all the elements that have to come in, carry through. And that's assuming that everything, in a perfect world, everything lines up. Now, if it doesn't line up, then what you have to do is you have to tear the entire ceiling up, be able to bring the plumbing down, be able to find some joints, so some, cut them in an angle, be able to either create some soffit or create some elements there to be able to give the enough run to be able to run it against and up to the bound. So ultimately, will affect the, yeah, it will affect definitely the interior integrity of the, in either in a structural way or characteristics.
Just a follow-up with that same question, your new proposed location. You will not run into the same problem?
No, what we're doing is we're essentially, that, the room right below that, it's all exterior walls. And what we'd have is right below that is the mechanical maintenance. So what we're going to do is we're basically, we're going to tear the, there's actually a bathroom on the other side of that room, so there is already plumbing and shore. What we're going to do is we're essentially going to run the entire plumbing down on the exterior wall, re-stucco that, remove all the stucco from the exterior, stucco the whole thing as one, so you won't ever see that. And we do have the choice of doing it from outside or inside. Most probably, we don't have any plywood, so we're going to end up adding some plywood and so structurally bring that up to more current code.
I think you've answered my question or concern that I had on the finding number two, so, thank you.
Commissioner Sheeps?
Yeah, I, you know, relative to just that item since we're there, it seems to me that the conditions that you described relative to doing the work, if you did it within the existing footprint, are similar to what you're going to run into. Even if you do it on the outside, you're still going to tear the walls apart, you're still going to, you're going to, you're going to, let me finish, you're going to impact the integrity of the existing house, the old, the old structure and so on. So, I mean, that's kind of what I gleaned out of the last part of that statement.
If I may?
Sure.
On the exterior part, okay, so on the exterior, exterior walls already go all the way down to the basement. So we already know that, that wall can be, essentially, I can cut in a straight line and go down. Going in the middle of the house, putting a bathroom in the middle of a bedroom or a middle of a space that do not line up with the exterior walls, being that the upper floors are the bathroom, so all of those have to be somehow altered or modified. Now, I have no idea as far as any walls that are lining up or not. That's the uncertainty. And if there are not, or they are, it will have a different impact. If they are, all the interior walls, pretty much 80 percent of the interior walls have built-in other architectural details and elements that are contributing to the interior part of the historic element. So all of those have to be affected. Putting it on the outside, stucco, basically taking out the exterior wall, taking out the stucco, bringing the plumbing down and re-stuccoing that, adding the second floor on top of that. So there's no, essentially, there potentially can be no impact on the interior, but there will be, obviously, there will be impact. And there's nothing there that it will say that, you know, we have a certain elements there that we have to maintain. That's the safest corner that we could find.
I see your point. I submit it won't be that simple, but you never know.
It's not simple, it's not simple, but I'm reducing the uncertainty or the issues that may arise of impacting the interior. That's all we're doing to putting it on the outside.
And I go back to the first question from Commissioner Lee. He asked you to discuss the exceptional circumstances and you alluded to the historic preservation component. If that wasn't there, isn't there still another issue?
I'm sorry?
If that, if that exceptional circumstance of historic preservation was not there, you'd still have an issue?
We would still have an issue, but the other circumstance that, you know, it is obvious, is that we are, the square footage is about 113, I'm sorry, 1300 or 1400 square foot of this square footage is being added on to the building based on some elements that played in the past that they never added on to the square footage. So the building, we're basically, he's being, Chris is being penalized for square footage that was built with the project and that was never added on. So there's already, there was a square footage that was there. So it is, in a sense, it is a special circumstance, being that we're now trying to make whatever the wrongdoings in the past and bring it in forth and making it legalized. And that's what, that's what we're doing. Point 0, .002 percent addition to that. It is an addition, but it is, it is, so, but our primary argument for the second option is historic.
Okay. And then just two minor points, quick points. My perception of the floor area ratio and some of these restrictions in these areas is not to compare them to houses that were built back in the 20s that were built a specific way before these conditions came into place. So that argument in your presentation goes against what I understand the purpose is of these rules. And then my assessment of whether we add or not is, it's not about this particular house, it's more about this area and many other areas where one, one change can lead to other changes, however you wanted to call, whatever you want to call that, that aspect of it. But that's kind of what I perceived when we were talking.
The FAR, from my understanding, is that the FAR, the reason that the FAR is in works in pretty much all municipalities are to control the massing, control the expansion, control the lot coverage, control the.
Are there any more questions?
Yeah, I'm good. I just, no, no, I wasn't questioning, I was sharing with you my perception. Yeah, thank you.
Although we appreciate your thoughts.
There was, by the way, there was another variance case, actually, we had that in 921 Crossview, which is outside of the 500 boundary. That was the floor area.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any more questions for the applicant?
Just for the record purposes, so you do work with our historical preservation engineer coming up with this design?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Platt a few questions. Thank you for being here.
Sure.
I'm personally looking at the four findings here. And in a historic preservation overlay zone, if using the historic designation as an exceptional circumstance is going to be one of the findings, is that something that we should expect for any work that's done in historic zones?
It could come up in other cases, obviously. I don't know that it sets precedent, taking it when we're looking at this as a single case. I think there are very valid reasons to consider using that exception in this case. Mr. Maliki's discussion about not knowing where the, how the walls line up, when you have a very steeply pitched roof on a Tudor like this, you don't have walls on the first and second floor lining up, which makes it much more difficult to run your plumbing lines, et cetera. So thinking about this case specifically, I think it's, I see it as a valid opportunity to use that exception.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Platt?
I did have one technical question, if I could ask the architect to come back very quickly. And I am, because I don't know, it's probably obvious, the area that you want to add the bath is like a deck. I know the rest of the house is designed structurally to take the load for second story. Would the decking area that is one story automatically be reinforced on the outside walls to take that load?
Exactly. What will happen is essentially, all the floor rafters, because they are sloped, what we'll do is we'll rip the roofing off and all the roof rafters that are there, they're going to be sistered with the flat, larger rafters that are going to be added on. That is going to be added on top of the, or sit on top of the existing parapet line that you see. The parapet will be cut off and it'll sit on the wall itself. That will automatically transfer the load. We may end up having some additional footing inside the building in the basement to widen that, the new bearing walls that are going to be added on. But I'm fairly certain that the exterior walls do not have any plywood. So adding that will add stiffness to the walls and then be able to carry the additional load on top that is going to be added on.
And where would the plywood be added?
On the exterior when we remove the stucco.
Of the new structure?
On the new and old, because I want to make this thing whole as same. I don't want to have the joint.
I want to reprocess the whole thing.
Okay, so that was my point. So you're going to take the plaster off and?
Exactly. We want to make the whole thing as one. I don't want to create a line between.
I just hadn't pictured that before, thank you. Madam Chair.
Mr. Platt?
Just one other thought about the exceptional circumstance. In general, that's looking at the neighborhood, comparing this house to others in the area. This house is in a historic district, as are all of its neighbors, but this house is also on the Glendale Register individually listed and under a Mills Act contract, which gives it what we think of as our highest level of preservation.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Yeah, one question, and this is not a leading question to our planners here, but if it is true that the house, which it is, it's on the Mills Act registry and so forth, and it is considered a historical asset, then wouldn't it be easy to make the fourth finding as well, to apply the same, to apply the same logic? What are your thoughts, Mr. Arnold?
I sort of understand your line of thought on that.
Which is more than anybody else here, so, I mean, thank you.
But I don't, I don't think that gets at the heart, really, of the difficulty in approving The notion, to me, I have a harder time, actually, with the notion that there's some fundamental reason why you have to add a bathroom on the second floor that's fundamental to the rights of the homeowner. This, I think, I'm agreeing, I agree with Mr. Platt that this is probably the best, and Mr. Maliki, this is probably the best solution, best location on this house. But that's not really the most fundamental question. The most fundamental question is, is it necessary to add a bathroom and do you need a variance to do it? And is the variance the, a reasonable tool for granting that approval or for allowing that to happen? Variances are intended to provide a way to deal with exceptional circumstances of a property design, lot configuration. We don't have that here. So even though this may be the best solution and the best location, I don't think that the fact that this is a historic district or a historic property is enough in and of itself to allow the addition of the bathroom or the extra floor area.
All right. All right. So.
Madam Chair, may I, may I ask the architect the same question on the fourth finding, please?
You could. The purpose of that would be?
I want to see how he's, how he's making the fourth finding. I just heard the counterpoint. Oh, no, the fourth finding.
The big question is that, are we here to police someone's function and how they're going to be used?
Actually, could you make the fourth finding for us? We appreciate that.
Given the, and I, let me, I'll read through the fourth findings that I have done. I believe this is it. Given that the ordinance intend to control the massing on a bulk, granting of the variance would not be contrary to objectives of ordinance, but in fact, in keeping with the objectives of the applicable regulations and the land use elements of the general plan. Modest addition of .02 percent is to ensure the development occurs with appropriate mass and scale and compatible with the neighborhood development. The proposed project provides sufficient code required setbacks, height, lot coverage, and parking spaces. Even though that the proposed minor bathroom addition exceeds the code required FAR number percentage, it is compatible with the neighborhood and mass and scale and compatible with the goals consistent with the code.
All right. That was what we asked you, thank you. Are there any other questions or shall I? Are there any other questions, or shall I close the public portion of the comment period and have deliberation? All right. Gentlemen?
I'll go first. You know, when I looked at this case, my initial reaction was, you know, just that of Mr. Hamilton, that, you know, this is simply adding to mass that's already existing. But then I asked a question about, you know, is this a first-time addition to this property? And is this, is there a unique features to this property? And that's one I wanted to hear. Have I heard that? I believe so. I think there's a uniqueness to this case. And also, I do not believe this is really intensification of the area. You know, the, the building is designed following the existing structural line. And, you know, when I, when I looked at the design, actually, you know, I was trying to find what the addition was. It fit right in to this structure. You know, sometimes we are, we interpret things in a very strict ways, so that not as to set any precedence. In this case, I do not think it's doing that. And, you know, going back to the uniqueness of this addition, I did ask, you know, what difficulty would they have, you know, trying to accommodate the need? Obviously, there was a need for this bathroom within the, within the existing floor plan. I was satisfied with the, with the sum of the, I guess, negative outcomes from trying to accommodate the need. You know, we have variance cases, and this is a step that we take in certain, you know, projects, you know, because that's the only vehicle that's available to us. And Ms. Hamilton alluded to that, you know, that is really variance needed for this type of, if that's a vehicle that needs to take this applicant to have this additional bathroom, do I see the need? If they have a family of four, and then you have upstairs of a three-bedroom house with the one bath, yeah, I think, you know, that could be justified. But as far as finding the four findings, after listening to the applicant, applicant, I could, I could find those. Obviously, with the help of the staff, I could justify those findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
I'll be very honest with you. When I looked at the four findings, and I want to concentrate on the first one, because I think is the one that's got the ma, no pun intended, the mass. For me to trade a bedroom for a bathroom, kind of unusual. For me to say that we can take the study, the office, in this era of technology, that more and more we see offices in single-family homes, more and more we see telecommuting, more and more we see cloud computing. For me to say that that is not important, you can do away with it, well, it may not be as important as a bathroom in the early morning times, but you see where I'm headed with this, with this line of thinking. So it is important, in my opinion, to have that office. Indeed, it reduces what you may know as fossil footprint outside and so forth. I mean, I have an office in my house, and I can tell you, versus five years ago, I use my office maybe about 60% more at home than I do in two other locations that I have. And, you know, that's the way that I base that. So, you know, with the technology where we're headed, an office, in my opinion, is something that we are going to be seeing more and more of it. Very good planning always takes into consideration the demographics and the changes in the tapestry and people's preferences as we go forward. So I can easily make the first finding. The second finding, this, this is uncertainly around the structural component or the application of it. If you were not to make the first and wanted to do it somewhere else, gives me enough reason to make that second finding. When you add on the historical significance of the, of the house, makes it even that much stronger. The third finding, obviously, was made by the staff, and the fourth finding, even by the report's own admission, that FAR in commercial zones perhaps is used differently than it is in residential zones. But if we were to say that FAR is not perhaps the sole purpose, but the bulk of its purpose is to address massing, then I think this project does that. So for that reason alone, also on the fourth finding, I can, I can lean towards that. Now, with one caveat, there was an issue about landscaping and how this thing, from what corner, is going to look how and so forth. And I don't know how we can, if my colleagues were to make the findings, all four of us are all, that is, three of us were to make the findings, how we can address that, to soften, to make this a little bit more palatable for the neighbors that perhaps have shown some, some concern about the massing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheets.
I'll start out by saying that my perception will be contrary to the last two commissioners, but it's not because I don't see merit in what is trying to be done with this structure. But I view this in a broader way, and, you know, I'm mixed, because I have a concern. We seem to dabble all around this floor area ratio thing all the time. In some cases, we're so rigid that nothing can happen. Other cases, we're very soft. And I, I tend to lean to want to follow that as much as I can, within reason. That's why we're here. This project itself isn't damaging to the concept, but it is part and parcel of the broader view that there's a reason that we put these restrictions in place. But then the second part of that, to me, I have some concern, and it really concerns me that if we start using historic preservation as a, as a exceptional condition, that bothers me. It's not that it, I'm, this is my perception. I'm not saying it's wrong, but it opens, if we, if we start to fudge on the floor area ratio, and then we automatically, or not automatically, but if we start allowing the floor area ratio be an exception, that finding is covered on any future houses within historic preservation areas. That's my take right now. I mean, if we, if we had interactions, long discussions, and talked about this in another forum, maybe I, maybe I could settle in on that, and it would be okay with me. Right now, it's not. So it, it would be difficult for me to make that finding. So that's kind of where I am now. And, you know, unless somebody remains to give their say can convince me differently, I'm probably going to stick with that perception.
Well, I was very interested in Mr. Platt's take on this, because I too am in the same feeling of the code that Commissioner Sheets is. I believe there is the ability to do discretionary review, that's why we're here. We're appealing the termination. I, I believe the, in keeping with the character of this house, is a great reason to respect and add on, but I also know that there are many homes in this area that we have already denied, that had extensions that, that were in a historic context, that they were not in a historic area at the time, because they already even, is fairly new, it's the last, no, the Rosmore, right. So I have the same concern that if a historic building in a historic area is going to be an exception, that to me is not a very good interpretation of historic overlay zones as a general rule. I think it's artfully done. I understand and totally respect that you don't want to destroy the house. I have a hard time seeing all four of these findings, and that is why I really asked you to sort of focus on the findings, so that you could convince me. But I don't see one of the four, and all four of them need to be there for us to, or at least each of us to make that decision. So I have to ask, if we have a draw, two and two, does that mean that the, that the... Ms. Ben?
Yes.
You...
Thank you. Members of the commission, so if there's a, if there's a tie, you need three affirmative votes in order to approve or deny the matter. And I'm going to double-check the bylaws, because the rules are sometimes different for the council as compared to what the redevelopment agency, but you, in order to approve, you need three affirmatives.
So it means this gets to the next one that...
Right. It would continue until the deadlock is broken.
Okay. I understand.
But I'm going to double-check that, because...
But I believe that's correct, but that's why I asked you. Thank you. So we can seek a motion?
So do we, is it a motion for continuing the case?
Well, if we actually vote on it, and we have a tie, it will be continued. So we don't have to continue it. Or we can vote to continue it.
Have to make a motion of some sort.
We have, we need a motion of one sort, correct.
Well, I'll make the motion.
Do you, excuse me, would you give us a second to check the rules first, please?
Shall we call a short recess?
If you could give us about five minutes, that would be great.
All right. We'll take a five-minute recess. All right, we'll take a five-minute recess. All right, we're back from recess, and we have a determination.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, for giving us the opportunity to verify. As was previously stated, it does, the rules do require, under the Muni Code 3062050, an affirmative vote of three members of the Commission is the minimum needed to reverse, affirm, or modify a decision of the zoning administrator or zoning hearing officer. Failing that, the matter would not pass. So another option for the Planning Commission would be to continue the matter for the fifth commissioner and to allow it to go to a vote at that time. That is also an option.
All right. So we...
Making a motion.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to continue the case for the fifth member to, to review this case, I guess, give him opportunity to, I guess, review today's hearing, rather than, you know, go with this, what it seems like to be, to be tie vote here.
So that's a motion to continue...
Motion to continue.
To the next meeting.
Yes.
A time certain.
Yes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes. We will need to make sure that Mr. Yousan reviews this hearing because this continuation means that there will, if I'm correct, there will be no new evidence, there will be only new, no, there will be no more evidence. It'll just be a review of the existing evidence that was presented, and then there will be a vote taken. So, thank you very much, and we will see you next time.
And I just want to clarify, the next meeting is going to be on March 6th.
All right, thank you. March 6th.
Before the derby. That's right.
All right, we have another, let me find my agenda here, I'm very sorry. We have one more case in front of us. We have a new business location, a 413 Palm Drive, and we have Via Zimetitis?
Zimetitis.
Zimetitis. I'm so sorry. Ask our planner.
No, thank you. Chairman Landrigan, what you have before you is a four-unit new condominium subdivision. This is a development that is currently under construction. There are four apartment, as you noticed behind you here on the screen, it's a four-unit development located in the R1250 zone. The development itself complies with all of the R1250 development standards and is consistent with all of the elements of the general plan. The applicant is simply requesting to subdivide the property, convert it from apartments to new condominiums. Staff has reviewed the proposal. Again, we find it in compliance with the R1250 standards, the general plan elements, and staff went into great detail in your staff report regarding the findings. Staff is recommending approval of the tentative tract map with 26 conditions. And that concludes my brief staff report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Zimetitis?
Oh, and I do have the plans, actually. I'd like to see them. Can the historian just move this over a little bit? So he'll move this here.
Any questions, Commissioner Astorian?
No.
I have no speaker card, so I think that the project speaks for itself. I do have one. Oh, I didn't see it. I was like, all right, I'm so sorry.
I'm wondering what happened.
I was too.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Haikmar DeRosson, my office is at 1545 North Ruzigo Road, Glendale. I'm tract engineer. This is a four-units condo project. Building was issued for apartment and currently is under construction. And we are asking for aerospace subdivision, of course, and the project itself contains at four bedrooms, I mean, four units, one three-bedroom, two two-bedrooms, and one four-bedrooms. There are 11 parking spaces provided for the project, 10 for the tenants, and one for the guests. It's, there are benching and some barbecues provided for the, as part of the amenities for the tenants in the common open space. And as I read all the condition by staff, I fully understand those condition, and we will fully comply with those. If there is any question, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The public comment period is closed, and for commissioners, questions?
No comments.
And a, a motion?
Okay. I'd recommend that the, that we approve the tentative tract map number 72149, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 16 dot 16 dot 16, final maps in 16 dot 28, new condominiums of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code and the attached conditions.
May I have a second?
Do you have to specify A through J and 25 conditions, or?
26.
No? Okay. Second.
I do have one statement. I, I'm really delighted. I think you did a very nice job. I think you've added a lot of amenities, and it's nicely done. Any other comments or a vote? Can I call a roll?
Hey, thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Sheets and a second by Commissioner Lee, in terms of roll call. Commissioner Astorian?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
And Chairperson Landrigan?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have...
Madam Chair, before you move on, on the, on the previous case, I know we're, we continued it, and we'll probably hear the opinions of, of Mr. Yousan, but can we have the staff prepare just in case if, you know, that the vote goes, you know, a certain way that you need to have those four findings? So if the staff can prepare those four findings in case, you know, Mr. Yousan finds it...
After review to vote for.
Right, exactly.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I think that would be prudent. Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you.
We have come, I believe, to the end of our commission items, and we have a planning department update. Do we have any updates?
Yes, just to give you an update, we had three appeals, one you heard tonight, we have one that's at 1113 South Central Avenue that you'll have at your next meeting, as well as the continued item from tonight. And then you'll also have 515 South Glendale that will be brought to you on the 20th of March.
All right, thank you very much. Comments from commissioners?
I do, Madam Chair. As you know, I'm involved with the Salvation Army in City of Glendale, this is a chapter involved with the City of Glendale, and the month of February is the month of dry for food, for the pantry food, and this is a month that is critical for the Salvation Army because the food pantry, the pantries stock really gets very, very low. So for those of you that have supported the Salvation Army efforts in our community in the past, this is really a great time to step up and be able to donate canned foods to decor at Central and Windsor. With that, I appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I might, members of the Commission, this evening, Yvette Nukian, who is in our city attorney's office, covered part of the Planning Commission meeting, and I didn't get the opportunity to introduce her to you, but she has been with the city for a number of years and is the principal prosecutor. She is very familiar with code enforcement issues, land use issues as a consequence of that, and so I just wanted to let you know that she on occasion will be stepping in, getting some experience advising the Commission, so I wanted to bring you up to date on that.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate the introduction, even though it's at the end. Thank you. So seeing no other items on our agenda, may I ask? We are adjourned. Thank you.